Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, the proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the February 26 meeting of the Grand Forks City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Moselski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Blonsky.
Here.
Cavami.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a call.
Very good. Item two, updates and information items, item 2.1 PFAS litigation update. Mr. Gosstead, please.
Thank you. Council members, I wanted to bring to your attention a matter that was drawn to my attention. If you recall, several months ago, we had a presentation about the PFAS class action lawsuits that involved 3M and DuPont. And there was a decision as to whether we wanted to stay in the class settlement or to opt out. At that time, the decision was made to opt out for a variety of reasons, one of which was it really was unknown what the settlement would be for the city. There was some language in the settlement agreement itself that there was some release language that may have been broader than what we had anticipated. And so by opting out, you preserve whatever rights you would have as against 3M or DuPont by not being a participant in the class action settlement. If you participated, you're releasing all those claims. And subsequently, we did file our opt-out documents and did it in a timely manner, as did Fargo, Minot, and Bismarck. And they're in the same category as City of Grand Forks. We do have some detection of PFAS. But I'm going to let Melanie talk about the levels. It's below the, I don't know if there's a standard yet, but it's below what the EPA is suggesting would be too high, right? Whatever that standard, I don't think they're calling it a standard yet, but I'll let Melanie talk about that. Since that time, in a class action lawsuit, they have to have what's called a fairness hearing, which means the judge is supposed to review the settlement and assure that it's fair to the parties that are participating, people can object to it. And in the 3M fairness hearing, there was some language by the court and by the attorneys representing the plaintiffs in the case that they felt that maybe those that were opting out shouldn't opt out. At the time, it was interesting is that there was a 32% rate of those that are in the same class as City of Grand Forks that opted out. There was a 68% rate for those that were in what are called Phase II that had opted out, too. The Phase II, as I understand it, were those that had no detection of PFAS at this point. So it was a fairly prevalent rate of opting out at that point. I think that's probably why the court was asking those questions. Some of the issues, and I reviewed the transcript briefly, some of the issues that were raised were, you know, for those that opt out, there's going to be, it could be some statute limitations issues determining who's, you know, was this 3M's PFAS, DuPont's PFAS, those, some of the issues that would have to be resolved if you start litigating it. One thing that I brought to my attention was right away, this is not going to pay for all the damages or the work that would be required for the PFAS. And I'm not even sure how much, what the amount would be for the City of Grand Forks, but I think any corrective work would be substantial, much more than what I think that you'd be anticipating to receive through the settlement. In speaking with the Public Works, people within the city, the concerns were raised is how is this going to be perceived? We think that there's probably going to be some federal fix for this. How would this be perceived if we participate? Meaning, you've already received some contribution here for this settlement, why should you participate in the federal funding? And, but we don't know, could be the other direction, too, right? And so those are some of the concerns that were raised by Public Works. I know that Public Works folks also communicated with their peers in Fargo, Bismarck, and Minot, and they raised the same concerns that we did in participating. Today, the City of Minot has a special meeting on this particular issue, and they decided to stay the course to remain, to opt out. If we wanted to come back in, we'd have to do something by March 1st, which is this Friday. And so there's two reasons why I wanted to bring this to your attention. One, because of the language and some of the comments made by the court, it was reported. I thought it was important for the council to be aware of it. And if you wanted to take a different course, we could certainly do so. We just need to do so by Friday. Doesn't take much, I don't think. But again, as I understand, Minot has stayed the course, and Fargo and Bismarck are going to do the same. So I'll maybe have Melanie come up and speak a little bit about what the levels are before I leave, and I'll be prepared to answer any questions when she's done.
Thank you, Mr. Gosstead. Ms. Parvee, please.
Good evening. As Mr. Gosstead noted, we have done testing for both PFAS and PFOs. We did testing in 2018 and 2021, and all the detacs we had were trace detacs. So these were below the quantitative limits and below EPA's health standards. So we are seeing a detect, but it's not of any concern at this point in time for the City of Grand Forks. We tested water treatment, wastewater treatment, and our municipal landfill.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Parvee? Yes, Ms. Moselski, please.
Okay, so I guess maybe from Mr. Gosstead. So you said that the amount of work that we'd have to put into this would cost us more than what we'd get in the settlement, correct?
No, what I'm saying is if you stay in the settlement, there really isn't much to do other than you're going to have to, I mean, they talk about free money, that's what they talked about.
Uh huh.
Generally not free, you're going to have to comply with certain requirements of the settlement in order to obtain that, those funds.
What would some of those things be?
I think you're going to have to follow the, and I don't know all the details.
Right, right.
But I suspect it's going to be following all the testing requirements, whatever the settlement agreement calls for, we're going to have to follow. And I haven't looked at all of those details, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to spend some time, staff is going to have to spend some time to do all of that testing to prove up where, what levels we're at in order to prove up the dollars that would have to be obtained. I don't know the exact dollar amount, and again, the total gross amount of the settlement is a really big number, right?
Right.
But there's also a lot of participants in the class, and so you may get not as much dollars as you would expect, and those dollars, as pointed out in the transcript, aren't going to get, not going to pay for all, everything that you need to get done.
I understand that. I guess I would like us to do anything that we can as a city to get those, you know, down to zero, not just trace amounts. Like what were the levels she said in 2018? We got level counts, and then what, in 2020, we also got level counts? And are they going up? Are they going down? Once again, don't drink the city water, so.
I can't answer those technical questions.
And if I may interject here, one of the things that I find particularly compelling about the current course is that the key word settlement, that if we were to join this settlement, then we're terminating any future opportunity for further action. And that concerns me. But Ms. Parvee, response for Ms. Moselski.
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't bring the actual number with me. I just know they're under the trace limits of detection. I can provide that.
You know, if they've gone up, or if they've gone down, or, you know?
Either way, they weren't concerning because they're under that limit.
I think they're concerning. I mean, microdosing on these things is concerning at all levels, regardless if it's trace amounts or not. It's concerning that this is the way that our water is for our constituents in the City of Grand Forks. And so are there any things that we can do as a city to get this down to zero? Or if?
Can I answer?
Yes, sir.
The one thing, under the terms of the settlement agreement, I don't think the settlement agreement says, and you have to reach zero, or the settlement then magically makes your detections to be zero.
Right.
What it does is it provides, I suppose, some source of funds to rectify whatever you can with those sorts of funds. But I think the language of this doesn't pay for all the damages in the settlement, or in the transcript speaks volumes. It's not going to get you, you're not going to get the resolution to get it to zero through the settlement.
And whatever the merits of that course of conversation are, the decision before us today. The decision before us this evening is to either join the settlement or to continue to opt out.
Correct.
That's really our choice tonight.
Correct.
I guess I just don't want to see it drop off the radar completely if we don't opt in. And so that's, I mean, as a city, as a water treatment plant, you know, I want to make sure that regardless of whether we opt in or we opt out, that this is something that we take seriously and we look, even though there are trace amounts, it is still not healthy for our, to be in our city water. And so that's just kind of what I want to make sure.
And I can answer that question, too.
Thank you, Mr. Gos.
I think the EPA is issued, or has issued, certain regulations that are going to start kicking in if they haven't already. And we're already starting, evidently starting to test for these, for this particular chemical, and whatever that, I trust anything that could be done will be done to try to alleviate those problems going forward.
So regardless of whether we opt in or opt out, we're still going to be doing the testing, and we're still going to try to resolve this issue for our city, correct?
To the extent we can. It's my understanding.
Though I guess.
Somebody else that's in the background in that room can probably correct if I'm wrong.
But I guess, you know, you said, Mr. Gosstead, that some of these testings and some of the things that we're going to have to do to comply if we join the settlement, I mean, we're already doing, so is it, or we're going to start doing so we can make sure that these levels aren't out of control? I guess I don't understand if we're going to do it anyways versus, you know, whether or not we opt in or out.
Because if the circumstances become worse, we're now locked into whatever that settlement is, I can't pursue 3M or DuPont for any further damages that they may have caused.
Okay. I motion approval then.
If I could just, just so everyone understands, and Councilmember Moselski, so these are, obviously, these chemicals are in the environment now, you know, thanks to chemical engineering, the magic of science, right? So there's two things that we'd have to do. So I think what Mr. Gos said, saying whatever we do to treat PFAS, it's going to be incredibly expensive, okay? And there's two facilities that we're going to have to upgrade. One is the water treatment plant. The other one you're going to talk about later today is the wastewater treatment plant. So when we talk about it, it's in the landfill. It's in the landfill because we've disposed of a lot of materials that have had PFAS. It enters the leachate system, which goes to our wastewater treatment plant, of which you're going to talk later about, you know, providing some additional treatment at the wastewater treatment, essentially, you know that. So the result of the landfill would be to have better treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. And then we get our source waters from the Red and Red Lake River. So right now, that would be our concern, because whatever comes into those two rivers, we have to treat at our water treatment plant. Thankfully, we have a robust treatment plant. The other thing, not only are we detecting PFAS now, the other part of the equation is we have to have science and engineering to be able to treat it to a zero. And that's the other challenge we're going to have. So number one, just because you can detect something at, you know, low levels, we still have to be able to treat it, too, at whether it's at a wastewater treatment plant or at a water treatment plant. So that's the importance of understanding what this is, because also engineering at our various facilities are going to have to get, and I suspect it's going to be some sort of membrane, certainly we have membranes at our, at our water treatment plant that we can expand. But just so you know, this has to come together, and I think when Mr. Gos says, talking about this, it's tens of millions a dollar just for Grand Forks. And if you multiply that over every, any town USA, you can see the magnitude of the issue. And this settlement is not going to resolve all of those challenges that we have, especially when it's just something that we're getting ourselves into at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We have a motion. Do we have a second? And then we can have further discussion. We have a second. Mr. Vien, please.
Yeah. So what's the source of this? When you talk about the water treatment plant, is it in the raw water that we're bringing in when you talk about it? Because there's got to be, you know, if you're looking at it, is it in the lines? Or are we accumulating this internally, like Todd just talked about? It ends up in your waste stream because everybody has wrappers and whatever? I mean, we got to look at the source of what's happening, especially with the water. I can see it with some of the waste streams. But can you explain where you're testing at and what that is?
Yes, Councilmember Vien, we have tested the source water for the Red Lake River as well as the Red River, and I believe that detect limits were in the Red River, but I can confirm that for you.
Yeah, because that's upstream from us. So that means you got to be looking at it upstream before it gets here, because we've already got it. You know, we did do a tour of the water plant, and does RO treatment take care of this issue versus what we do with conventional treatment?
Correct. We are able to treat. And I'm not sure that we've got enough detail right now to see what the levels are within the water source as well as at the finished treatment, to see if there is any increase or decrease. But we are able to treat for the PFAS. So I can definitely look at that information and provide more as we.
Because it would be, I mean, one of the things we've looked at is expanding our RO treatment and do more of that, because we have space already built there that would help with this issue. But that would just be on the treatment side, like you talked about. You still got to handle it on all your waste, which is your landfill, and what we do with the wastewater.
Correct.
Any further questions? Yes.
Did you say we are currently treating for it?
We are, we have the capability to, to treat for it. I don't know that we have enough details, because when we currently tested for the source water, there wasn't even, it was hard to even know that there was a detect because the limit was, or the amount was so small. So the amount that we're noticing in our water samples are, is such a minor amount that it's hard to even detect. But it did hit the detect at one point in time, so we do know that we, it is present.
Can we get more information on adding that treatment? I mean, it's a forever chemical, right? So it's going to stay in our bodies forever. I think, I think we should look at trying to treat it now before it gets worse.
I think, I think we should, number, study the detacs, but also look on the engineering side about, you know, does our current membrane RO system, what is it? If it starts at a really low level, does it remove it to zero or not? So we haven't done any of those sorts of studies, and so before we just jump in, because again, if we go down that, you know, it's tens of millions that we're going to move forward with. So I think we're so early, we know it's an issue. And what I've heard from the EPA, from the State Health Department, is you should be assured that this current administration is highly involved in regulating environmental concerns. So I don't think we have to worry about the Biden administration having a total full-court press on this. And we just need to make sure what we're doing here in North Dakota makes sense, and Grand Forks. So we'll, we take it serious, and we're going to take it serious. And thankfully, we have two facilities that can either be upgraded, or we'd be able to do it currently with our current facilities. But we're going to have to do some before and after, and we're going to have to have testing. The testing's the other part. So just so you know, we may be traced right now. My guess is testing will get better and better on PFAS, so you'll get, you'll get more detacs on it, because the testing will evolve and become better over time, too. So we'll keep in touch with all the various nuances of this issue.
Could we test our wastewater also?
Yes, we actually have, and I apologize, I don't know if they're testing the influent that's coming in or the effluent at this point in time. I know we're testing at the landfill as well, but I believe that's just in the leachate.
I imagine you going out with like the little hot tub strip. I'm guessing it's a little bit more difficult than that.
Mr. Weber? Yes, President Sandy, please.
Although I have infinite confidence in our tax staff at the City of Grand Forks, I have to believe that we aren't the only people on the planet that are talking about this, especially in the United States when there are two companies that are on the hot seat. I would prefer us not to spend and invest a significant amount of money into anything until we talk to other communities, find out what other people are learning and testing and doing first. We should, we should talk to some other experts, some other people that have been dealing with this longer than us, because I think we can probably leverage what others are learning to hopefully keep our costs down and ultimately get us the better, not only return on our investment, but better end result, which is ultimately the most important thing. So I don't, I don't know who we could talk to, but there have to be other cities that are way ahead of us on this.
Very good. Good discussion. And for some additional context, there are several major brands of bottled water on the shelf that contain PFAS. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments, Mr. Vien? Please.
Yeah, I think one of the most important things we could do is understand what the severity of the issue actually is. Obviously, is there really, how high is that risk? Because there's all kinds of things in the air we breathe, in the water we drink, and all of this already exists out there. So what is the impacts, the health impacts for sure of what that happens? How long do they stay with us? I mean, there's a lot of information around this. I know this is being more and more published. I've been at a few conferences where this has been a big deal, where they've started to look at this every place across the country. But I don't know of anybody who has really good answers to any of this. And so the question is, how far do you go now? What risk do we actually take in entering it or not entering into the lawsuit? I mean, there's benefits and pros and cons both ways. So I don't know if I know enough to say how to even, should we go forward or not? Should we, what are we, you know, what might we miss out on if we go forward and then something else happens later? I don't know.
Chairman Weber, I think what we do know is this settlement is not going to solve the issue that we have. It's going to be minor amounts that would come to Grand Forks. So I think we have that, we're assured of that. Whatever comes in the future will be well above and beyond this settlement. And if we, the concern is if we enter this settlement, we may foreclose future more impactful funding streams. And so that's why we don't want to jump in this, because the gains are going to be so small compared to the wins in the future to help us out. And by the, when the future comes, we'll have much better information about what we're going to need to do. So we don't, that's our concern right now, is the risk on this is, the risk reward, the risk is so high and the reward is so low, that's why we're asking you not to move forward.
And there is a motion to do exactly that. Any further discussion or ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes to continue to opt out of the settlement. Three discussion items. Item 3.1, Appointment to Event Center Commission, Ms. Irene Halbretter. Do we need any further information, or is anyone willing to, ready to make a motion?
I'm over approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Weigel, second from Ms. Moselski. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That's confirmed then. Item 3.2, Proposed Restructuring of the Planning and Community Development Departments. Mr. Phelan.
Vice President Weber and members of the community hall, we have an exciting opportunity. As we've discussed before, Ms. Richards is going to retire here in a short amount of time. And so, as with all positions, especially administrative positions, the mayor's goal is to, Mayor Berchinsky's goal is really to reduce as much as we can from the administrative level. And so that's really at the spirit of what we're trying to do here, and try to put as many resources to the street level and to those that are providing the services as possible. And so that's in the spirit of what we're doing here. If you went back to 2014 and 2015, the so-called, currently called community development used to be known as urban development, they were over at the Housing Authority building. And so what we did in 2014 and 15 is that we moved urban development over to City Hall, called them community development, and then had then combined with planning, the planning department. So we did that. Then over the years, that group has worked better and better together and have really been, become really synchronized. I think it's a better marriage than with the Housing Authority. So I think it's proven out over time that the reason why we're in front of you tonight is that it was, it was a better arrangement, number one, bringing them closer to the City of Grand Forks and aligning, I think we have aligned them with the right department being in the planning department. So since 2015, 14, you know, that's gone really well. The one thing that's changed with the mayor's administration currently is that we moved planning and community development down to the first floor where the mayor, city administrator's office was, so that they could be more public facing. So we've done that over the last four years to drive or move in forward. So the other thing that you guys have done is that we've sold off several of our jobs development authority buildings from Corporate Center 1 and 2, Cirrus Aircraft, we've sold off over the last few years, too. So we have less of a portfolio in community development. So when you see the reduction in positions and the realignment here at City Hall, there's lots of reasons why we've done, we've kind of refocused our efforts. So we have one more opportunity with Meredith Richards retiring at this point in time is to reduce it, one more position as a department head and align it with the current planning director under one department head position. So that's what we're asking for, as a natural evolution of what we've been working on. In addition, what we're asking to move forward with are two promotional opportunities in the department, one in economic development and one in community development, and then a re-titling of the current assistant city planner, to call that a planning manager. And that's the position Andrea Edwardson holds. So you'd have a department head with three managers, and I think we have two planners. And so certainly, these managers aren't managing a lot of people, however, they're managing programs. So that's the difference. At City Hall, we manage generally programs. If you're out in police, fire, or Public Works, or likewise, you're managing a lot of people. Here in City Hall, we don't manage a lot of people. So that's the difference of the manager position. And so we would, community development is really more centered on CDBG and some of the, those kinds of programs and some of the programs that Mr. Weber worked on locally, that's really centered on that kind of part of community development. Economic development is really a partner to, from the City of Grand Forks to the EDC and some of those grant applications. And Andrea Edwardsen is obviously working on planning in that role. So one less position as a department head, two promotional opportunities. Andrea's position as planning manager would stay at the same, same level. The combined position of planning and community development director would stay at the current level that we have in the salary plan. So thankfully, we have department heads that are willing to step up and take more responsibility, more leadership, more management without a pay raise. So that's, you know, says a lot about our culture and commitment we have here with sitting employees on behalf of the citizens of Grand Forks that they're willing to do that. The one thing that in the staff report that we've talked about is there is, the department has asked for the position of community development director, that they would be able to hire a lower level planner position to replace that position, okay? And so right now, in speaking with Mayor Berchinsky, we'd like to see that, let's just let it play out for a while and see if we can continue to function well without adding positions. So that's why under that org structure, it's called a vacant position, just because we're not ready to move forward with that position. So that's why the range of savings is from about $40,000 if we fill the community development director position with a planner position. If we don't fill that vacant position and we have one less position with the two promotions, the savings is in and around $130,000. So you can see between 130,000 to 140,000, we're planning on saving. And certainly, Mayor Berchinsky wants to be closer to the 130 than he wants to be to the 40,000 in saving administrative costs. So we also, Meredith is going to fully retire in June. She's going to retire in April, but she's going to have, she has some leave that she's going to carry out and then fully retire in June. When you retire from the City of Grand Forks, you have to take a 30-day period off before you can be asked to come back. We planned between now and, in that time period with, later this summer with Meredith, is that we would like to currently have her come back and work on some city projects that are really important on her a part-time basis. And I think would serve as a good transition for the department on some of the things that she just has such tremendous institutional knowledge to get us to the end of the year. And then, once we look closer to the end of the year, we can see how much effort we need from Meredith, and we'll see from Meredith how much, how much feeling she has to stick around with the City of Grand Forks, too. So it's really a good day. It's a celebration of Meredith and her transition to retirement, but it's a celebration that we've, we have an organization where we have people that are willing to take on more responsibility. We have an organization which people are willing and able to accept potential promotional opportunities and to keep moving forward in a good transition. So it looks like we've done a good job succession planning. We've combined the right departments. It was the right move to move. The then urban development back order to City Hall, that proved out correct that we did that. And so we think we're in really good shape for the next generation of planning, community development, and economic development as we move forward. So with that, I stand for any questions. Vice President Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. There's two parts of the staff recommendation, but we can take those as a single. Ms. Moselski, please.
So currently, is Meredith a contract employee?
So currently, is Meredith a contract employee?
She's civil service.
So we're getting rid of one more civil service? And I kind of think it's embarrassing to ask someone to take on another role and not give them a raise. I know you said that that kind of speaks to the culture, but I'm not sure that's a good culture that we want to represent, asking someone to take on another full-time position and not get any raise. So.
No, I think, maybe I, I was trying to say what Ryan's trying to do, but when we did look at the combined position under our current salary plan, we aligned the position so that it's, we feel like it's aligned in our city organization of where a combined position should be. I think it's aligned where, I think similar to where our water manager is, Melanie was just up here, I think it's in and around that pay range, or a Public Works Director position. So I think it's aligned, it's really more to the spirit that we have existing people that are, are willing to step into further roles. But I think the other important part of this, Councilmember Lunskey, is that we're also providing two promotional opportunities to managers to help support the department director. So I think it promotes to the culture of, we get people ready, they're able to seek promotions, and to move forward in their careers. And that's what I'm speaking to, the culture.
And can you explain a little bit more about the contract employee versus civil servant?
Sure.
And why we're getting, it seems like we're getting rid of civil servant and going more towards contract?
Yes. Councilmember Lunskey, I've gone back and forth on this. When I first arrived here and became a department head in 2000, previous to me and a few others, there were civil service department heads. Everybody was civil service. So there was a shift in the administration in and around 2000, that department head went to contract position. So we're at-will employees, essentially, with some benefits, if some, if regarding severance and those sorts of things. Then probably in and around 2010, we started migrating department heads under, under, so the Mayor Brown started out contracting with the city council. There was a kind of a unified that we're going to contract department heads. And around 2010, we, Mayor Brown and that current council, we started migrating back to civil service on department heads. Under Mayor Bochensky, we've gone back to contracting department heads. And so over the last four years, we've contracted several department heads, including Mr. Brooks as Planning Director. So the reason why this would be a contract position is because it's going to combine under his role. He's currently a contracted at-will employee, and so we're asking to amend his current agreement, employment agreement as, as now the re-titled Planning and Community Development Director.
I move approval.
We have a motion from Mrs. Soski, and a second from Mr. Weigle. Further questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Veen, I missed.
No, I was going to say, I appreciate the comments, because I have been at odds a little bit with, similarly, with at-will versus, versus civil servant. And obviously, there's benefits, there's pros and cons to both of them. I do like the idea, I'm glad you were able to talk about internal versus external equity when you were looking at the position, because I kind of feel like too, I'd like to see people are properly compensated for the work that we do. We never want to spend more money than we have to, but I want to make sure within the structure of the system, it's equitable for, because it's a win-win when we, when we do that. And so I was a little surprised when you said it was the same level. I thought it would have been. But where they, within that level too, there's, there's some gaps there or something to, or expansions. Would that be true also, Todd?
There is, yeah. And so I just want to make everyone know, Mr. Brooks, if he, so, if he signs this agreement, you approve it, he's being fairly compensated within our organizational structure. But I'm impressed by people willing to say, you know, because we set it up so in, under the structure that we were going to, intending to combine this position into one. And obviously, we've been working together. So just so everyone knows that. And so what I'm trying to say in the culture is that people are willing to step up and do things, and not just say, you know, that's, you know, I don't, I don't know if I want to do that. I don't know if it's in my job description. We don't have people that do that. You're going to talk about a almost $100 million wastewater treatment plant project that's going to move forward, and just because we're doing that project doesn't mean, you know, someone's going to get a pay raise or something like that. It's, it's just people really stepping up to do tough things and challenging things, because it's part of their job. And we do, I think under the last salary plan, you know, we did realign, the city council did approve that salary plan, and really realigned department heads in a better position than we had before. I think under this, we'll discuss again where department heads should be in the organization as part of this year's budget for '25. There'll be additional discussions on that, too.
Anything further? Hearing nothing further. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And speaking of Planning and Community Development Programs, item 3.3, 2024 Arts Regrand Program, Mr. Conlon.
Good evening, Chairman Weber, members of the committee. As you'll recall, the 2024 Arts Regrand Program was, for this program year, brought in-house after about six years with the Community Foundation administering the program. Community Foundation has done a great job for us over the years, but just bringing it in-house this year enabled us to retain that full regrand budget to get, to send out to agencies. That was $154,500 for 2024. Applications for that process opened on January 24th and closed on January 5th, or February 15th, rather. We received 16 applications from organizations we see typically each year, requests totaling just shy of $300,000. We had a committee of seven, seven folks, including Mayor Bochensky, as well as councilperson Weber and councilperson Lunskey. A piece that, I guess, staff added to this, as we kind of considered these requests, that traditionally applicants have received at least partial funding for their requests. So in the interest of minimizing sort of disruption in that transition period between Community Foundation and the city, that was certainly a priority. We didn't want to make sure that folks weren't blindsided by the shift this year. So the funding recommendations that are attached to your staff reports are, sort of reflect a hybrid approach that attempts to balance that, the ranking priorities of the committee members with the sort of historical funding averages that folks have received. So we tried a blended, hybrid approach. We sent an email out to all our applicant organizations, just informing them of what our recommendations would be, and the feedback we've received has been largely quite supportive of the process, specifically the streamlined process and the recommendations, and certainly the appreciation of the committee members for, for taking the time to review everything. So our plan moving forward is to work with that committee to discuss some relatively minor program adjustments for the 2025 program year. We'll do that in the coming weeks, but right now, we're just looking for a motion to approve the, the funding recommendations as laid out in the staff report. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon. Mrs. Soski, please.
Can you tell me the process that you go through in determining, you know, what's high priority versus low priority?
So essentially, this year, again, in the interest of not upsetting the apple cart too much in that transition period, we really leaned on our committee members' kind of subjective experiences and expertise to kind of weigh those priorities in their, you know, in their estimation of the applications, the merits of the application. In terms of the prioritization process, it really was quite simple this year in the sense of rank one to 16, based on kind of your, as a committee member's, you know, values, priorities, that sort of thing, and ranking them on a scale of one to 16, among the total application amongst each other. So.
And just like, like we have that Greater Grand Forks Fund, right, that they disperse money to, are, is one of the purposes of this to bring people into our community, or is it just to support the arts?
So that's actually an interesting, that's a conversation that came up during the meeting, is sort of, you know, in this transition year, trying to, you know, maintain some continuity for organizations. But that'll be some of the conversation we have with the committee in the coming weeks, we think, kind of finding that balance, where do we draw that line of, the programs are different in the sense that this has been typically more of a support the nonprofits kind of function. But there's also an appetite of, you know, we want to see new things as well. We want to expand offerings and grow our arts community as well. So that is a conversation that we're going to be having in the coming weeks, to kind of figure out where that line is.
All right. I guess my personal opinion is, I'd like to see the children ranked a little bit higher. You know, art-wise has a lot to do with kids and the summer performing arts company, but you know, just the Grand City's Children Choir, you know, ranked pretty low, and the Youth Orchestra. I don't understand how the UND Writers Conference, I mean, if it's a writers' conference, they should just really need some pens and paper. Maybe we could donate that to them. I'm not really sure how much it costs to put on a writers' conference. I'm not sure what we're actually paying for, I guess. So.
I think the committee members did weigh heavily the number of direct individuals, artists who are benefiting, also the number of audience members who are benefiting. So, and I think that art-wise showed up as the top priority, largely because of the value in exposing children to the arts. So I think that was, that was a shared consideration. So it was a combination of all of those factors.
And then I guess another question, I have like the North Dakota Museum of Art. I guess I don't even really know where that is. Is that on campus?
It is.
So.
Well, it's, it's right next to campus. It's actually not part of campus. It is an independent organization.
Do they get funding from campus, or anything like that?
They do a lot of work with children and families.
Okay. I would just, yeah, and the UND Writers Conference, I guess. Putting so much money towards things for the university kind of bothers me a little bit. So they have enough money over there. But, thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Mr. Veen. With the motion on the floor, anything further? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 3.4, Surplus Property for the Police Department. Chief Nelson, please.
Chairman Weber, members of the committee, basically what you have before you is a request to surplus out a vehicle that it's reached an age where it's not functional anymore. And we were trading seven Mark squads away for seven more on a trade. This was an outlier in that it was one of our K-9 cars, but Nelson Ford has offered us $1,800 for that car. So in essence, all we're asking to do is include that as part of the trade. So we'd be trading off eight Mark police vehicles. We'd be getting seven new vehicles. This would just offset an additional $1,800, which we've exhausted every other means we could. It was a K-9 car. It's the last one of our vehicles that was black and white. It doesn't even match the rest of our fleet. So it's, it's 2014. It's, it's well bypassed its usefulness.
I move approval.
We have a motion, and a motion from Mrs. Soski, second from Mr. Weigle. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief Nelson. Item 3.5, Bid Award for Project Number 8739, District Number 778, paving and streetlights on South 44th Street from 36th Avenue South to 500 feet south of that. Mr. Latuxia, please.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. The project before you is the paving and streetlights project on South 44th Street. Bids for this project were received on February 22nd, 2024. The low bid of $376,758.53 was submitted by Paris Contracting, and was approximately 17.6% under the engineer's estimate. We received a total of six bids, and they were all opened. They ranged from about $377,000 to $529,000. The engineer's estimate for this project was about $457,000. Because there is no current improved road section in this area, the cost of this project will be assessed entirely to the benefiting properties. So with that, staff recommends to award the contract to low bidder, Paris Contracting, in the amount of $376,758.53 for Project Number 8739, District Number 778, paving and streetlights on South 44th Street from 36th Avenue South to 500 feet south. Any questions?
I move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Veen, second from Mrs. Soski. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item 3.5, Bid Award for Project Number, uh, Bid Award for Project Number, 3.6, Bid Award for Project Number 8746, 2024 Water Main Replacement. Mr. Latuxia.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. The project before you is the 2024 Water Main Replacement on South 20th Street from Blackwood Avenue to 17th Avenue South. We received bids for this project also on February 22nd. A little bit of $805,682 was submitted by Tager Contracting, and was approximately 2.2% under the engineer's estimate. Funding for this project will come from Fund 5300 Waterworks, where $600,000 is budgeted for this project in 2024. We only received one bid for this project. It was from Tager Contracting, in the amount of $805,682. The engineer's estimate for this project was $823,963. So this one came in a little bit under. With that, staff recommends to award the contract to low bidder, Tager Contracting, in the amount of $805,862, and approve any necessary budget amendments for Project Number 8746, 2024 Water Main Replacement.
We have a motion from Mr. Weigle.
A second.
Second from Mrs. Soski. Questions, comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Please tell your dad hello. It's nice to see him. Item 3.7, Bid Award for Project Number 8750, 2024 Inlet Protection Services. Mr. Danielson, sir.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. This project is an annual project that we run in the city for inlet protection services. We've been doing it for about the past three years now, and it's been pretty successful. The intent of the project is to give the, the city engineering department control over the inlet protection devices that go in in the residential construction areas in our town. So as residential homes build out, they're required, and the city is required as part of our MS4 permit to maintain erosion control practices in this area. And this project just gives us a better handle on that whole situation. We opened bids for this project last Thursday, and we got four bids. The low bid came from Green Earth Landscaping in the amount of about $95,000, which was about 19% underneath the engineer's estimate. This is a contractor that did the project last year, so we've got experience with them. They did a really good job last year, so we're happy to work with them again. Funding for this project is going to come out of 5,400 stormwater budget. This project specifically wasn't included in the budget initially, so we are going to be looking for a budget amendment to get funds brought into that fund. But we are looking to award the contract to Green Earth Landscape in the amount of $94,873, and then approve any necessary budget amendments for the project.
And we can do that all with a single motion?
Yep.
Move award and the budget amendment?
A motion from Mr. Veen, second from Mrs. Soski. Questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 3.8, Bid Award for Project Number 8747-48-49, 2024 Sanitary.
We'll start again. 3.8, Bid Award for Project Number 8747-48-49, 2024 Sanitary Water Storm Sewer Repairs. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you, Chairman Weber. Good evening, members of the committee. This is our annual contract to accomplish repairs on underground utilities, whether it's stormwater, wastewater, or water main. This went out for bid, and bids were opened last week, Thursday. We received two bids. The low bid was submitted by Tager Contracting, and was approximately 15% underneath the engineer's estimate. So we're very pleased with the bids we've been receiving so far this year. With that, we are recommending award to Tager Contracting in the amount of $269,680 for this project.
Questions? We've got a motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Mrs. Soski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And so we're on 3.9. 3.9 Plans and Specs for Project Number 8754, 2024 Asphalt Street Repairs. Mr. Lieberman, please.
Thank you. This is our annual contract for asphalt repairs. If we have a section of asphalt street that severely potholed, we do small repairs. Usually, budgeting a section of asphalt street that severely potholed, we do small repairs, usually budgeting for about $50,000 for this contract. Engineering has prepared the project documents, so we are requesting tonight approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bid for this requirement.
Questions or a motion?
Move approval.
Motion from Mr. Veen, second from President Sandy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 310, plans and specs for project number 8755-56-57, 2024 concrete street repairs and arterial streets subdivision, concrete rehab. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you once again. Similar to the last staff report, this one is similar for concrete street repairs. This is divided into three separate projects, general repairs, subdivision rehab, and arterial street rehab. Most of the funding for this is budgeted from Fund 4815, and the remainder is reimbursable basis from Fund 5300 and 5400 from Public Works for concrete work we do to support them. Overall, this requirement is about a $350,000 requirement. It is budgeted. So this evening, we are requesting approval of plans and specifications and direction for engineering to advertise for bids for this, this contract.
A motion from Mrs. Soski, second from Mr. Weigel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Again, Mr. Lieberman, 3.11, plans and specs for project number 8789, district number 781, reconstruct 40th Avenue South from Belmont Road to Cherry Street. Oh, Mr. McGuire. Okay.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. This is a reconstruct project on 40th Avenue South from Belmont Road to Cherry Street. We had this before you earlier this month to approve the engineer's report, create the assessment district, and prepare plant, prepare plans and specs. Since then, we've had a public input meeting. The current construction cost for this project is estimated at $2.91 million. The city share of that is $2.4 million. The estimate for the bike path will be $354,000. That portion will be 100% funded through City Fund 4815. Benefiting properties will be special assessed for 20% of the cost of the project. This project is not currently budgeted, but at, we will request a budget amendment at the time of bid award. So with that, staff recommends approval of plans and specs and directs, and direct the engineering department to advertise for construction bids for project number 8789. Any questions?
Ms. Lunskey.
I just have a basic question about all projects. Sorry to pick on you, but, so the city share is usually 80%, right?
Yep, for reconstruction of classified street.
And it doesn't matter if the street is, say Belmont, that's, that's, has a lot of traffic to a sleepy little street. It's always the same, no matter how much traffic is on it?
There is a difference between local assessments and classified assessments. The districts are different. And the, and the benefit is different. The benefit distribution is different.
Is, so is the share to the local people different?
Everyone, everyone is assessed for a local street and a classified street.
Can you tell me one more time what a classified street is?
So those are your main roads, Belmont, 40th, South 20th Street, some of those stuff, larger streets we've been doing lately.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And so the district is larger. There's more people being assessed of the shares.
Generally, in a classified, for a classified street, you have a bigger district. It affects more people. Yes. And that's all based on our assessment policy.
Mr. Veen.
Yeah. And when, can you verify where the city share comes from? What, what funding mechanism?
City Fund 4815.
And what, what is that? Is that, is that sales tax dollars?
Primarily, primarily sales tax. That's back to our, you know, our 2017 half cent sales tax.
Yeah. And that, that's kind of what I wanted to articulate. Where, that's where the city share comes for these kinds of projects, is, is getting money back to the community from the sales tax that they're paying in. And that goes to help fund the city share. And then, of course, the local share is covered by that 20% individuals.
Before the sales tax, property owners, instead of paying 20%, were paying 50%, right?
Correct.
Mr. Weigel. Motion from Mr. Weigel, second from Mrs. Soski. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Again, okay, Mr. Lieberman, item 312, revised special assignment district boundary for project number 8790, district 782, reconstruct 10th Avenue South from South 48th Street all the way to 350 feet west of South 50th Street. Please.
Thank you, Vice President Weber. This project met the city council two weeks ago, where the council created a special assessment district for the reconstruction of self, or 10th Avenue South in the industrial park area. The, the engineering department drew up the proposed district boundaries based on our written policy. We met with the Special Assessment Commission last week, Friday, and had a good discussion. You know, their goal is to assign benefits, and they determined that there is a property outside of that boundary that they believe does derive benefits from this project. So on their behalf, tonight, I'm requesting to revise that district boundary to include that property, which meets their intent of equitable distribution of benefits.
Mr. Veen.
Yeah. I was able to talk today with Mr. Lieberman, and it certainly makes sense to add that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the change in the district.
Very good. We have a motion from Mr. Veen, a second from Mrs. Soski. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And item 313, approval of 2024 rodent and pest extermination for the flood, flood protection system and the Greenway Services Bill. Ms. Greenall. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice President Weber and members of council. I hope this is the most boring item that you have on the agenda tonight. It's kind of a housekeeping item. It's before you. We do, do go for control every single year. We've been doing it for at least 18 years. But this year, the quote came in over our ceiling for what city personnel are authorized to move forward with without council approval. So I'm looking for permission to accept this quote.
I move approval.
We have a motion from Mrs. Soski, second from Mr. Veen. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of getting the prairie dog shit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. And item 313, or 314, advanced metering infrastructure system and water meter replacement. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. Not sure this one will be quite as simple as Cam's, but we'll try. I'm here tonight to present a proposal to replace the city's aging residential water meters and upgrade the meter reading system. I just want to give you a brief overview of our current system and then go through why we need, why we recommend making this change now. And then finally, I would explain the RFP process and selection process. The city's water meter reading system currently consists of approximately 14,000 residential and 2,000 commercial water meters, which are read monthly using a drive-by system. So essentially, every house has a meter. There's a transmitter in the basement of the house, and our staff will get in a vehicle equipped with a collector, drive the streets and avenues of the entire town, and collect all the reads from all the meters, bring them back to our, our office, and then transmit them to the billing department. It takes two operators in two vehicles, two days, so four days a month for us to read the, the system currently. The system was initially installed in 1999 under a project very similar as what I'm presenting today. I believe Todd actually was, Mr. Phelan was in charge of that project when it was done originally. So, and I just put the American Waterworks Association, which provides best practices for the water industry. The average life expectancy of a residential water meter is 20 years. So ours have met or exceeded that. And the life expectancy for the radio transmitter is 15 to 20 years. So the majority of those meters that were installed in 1999 are now on their second, sometimes even their third transmitter. And then, as the water meters age, the mechanical measuring mechanisms wear out, causing the meters to under-record by up to 15%. This under-recorded water usage is just direct revenue loss for the city. A new water meter would hopefully collect 15 to, 10 to 15% more usage per month, per meter. So knowing that our water meters are reaching the end of their lifespan, the water department had to plan to do a phased meter replacement from 2024 to 2027. We have $1 million in the budget for 2024 for this purpose, and we intended to ask for an additional $1 million each year through 2027 to fully replace all these outdated residential meters. Unfortunately, in September of 2023, one of our vendors, that Itron Inc., which provides the, the transmitters for our water meters, discontinued the transmitter that's necessary to read those older meters that were installed before, we'll say, 2000, I mean, 2007. So everything installed before that was a pulser-style meter, and they no longer produce that transmitter, meaning that we had to come up with a quicker approach to, to get this meter replacement done, because currently we're replacing, last year we replaced almost 800 dead transmitters. I assume this year we'll have to do another 700, 800 dead transmitters in every year moving forward. So in order to avoid putting more obsolete transmitters on obsolete meters, we're suggesting a quicker replacement process. So after, after researching meter replacement projects and visiting with vendors, it was determined that a compressed replace, compressed replacement project that included reading system upgrade could be completed in two years with a total cost, cost very close to the estimated price to just replace the meters in our phased approach. By doing the project all at once, the city will receive better pricing due to bulk purchasing and having prices locked in from 2024 instead of increases each year. And we will also only pay one mobilization charge. For our phased approach, we would pay an install contractor to come each year and install meters and pay them a mobilization cost each year. The current, the proposal in front of you eliminates that. To the RFP process, prior to drafting the RFP, relevant vendors were invited to meet with staff to present their metering technology and provide input on a possible project. Six vendors provided in-person presentations to city staff. We also consulted, consulted the IT department, who provided input related to software, cybersecurity, and meter reading network equipment. The information gathered from the vendor presentations and IT was used to draft an RFP for residential water meter replacement and, and reading system upgrades. The RFP was advertised from December 5, 2023 to February 7, 2024, receiving seven responses. All seven responses proposed different versions of an automated meter reading system, or AMI, and smart water meters. The AMI network combined with the smart water meters fully automates the meter reading system. The network is essentially placing collectors on vertical assets, water towers, cell phone towers, and reading the system automatically at a push of a button. All the reads will just collect to those collectors from the homes. No one has to drive by, and the data's all collected instantaneously. The combination of the, the AMI network and the smart meters also provides additional tools and data for the water department to help us better manage our water usage. A few of those options are detailed water usage down to the hour, so I can, if you call me and ask how much water you used yesterday, I could tell you how much water you used each hour yesterday. Also have high-usage alarms, leak detection, freeze warnings, tamper alarms, battery health alerts, and automatic shut-off meters. I just wanted to go over two of those that I think are really helpful. The high-usage slash leak detection, currently we read the water meters on the 15th of each month. If you have a toilet that starts leaking on the 16th of the month, it's going to leak for an entire month before we catch it, and then we notify you, and you've essentially racked up a pretty large water bill, because no one knew your toilet was leaking. The current system monitors your usage, collects a read every four hours, but it also takes a reading each hour, is also transmitted. So if your meter shows continuous usage for multiple hours, it'll send us an alarm. We contact you, and you can get it fixed, avoid a costly bill. And then the other option that I think is going to be highly beneficial is an automatic shut-off meter, which is essentially a meter that has a shut-off valve built into it. It's an optional meter. It costs a little bit more than the traditional meter that they're going to install in the majority of the town, but it allows staff to shut off water for any use, any reason on demand. I think the two main usage are people who go out of town for long periods of time over the winter, snowbirds. Currently, we go to their home, we shut their water off, before they leave, and then when they come back, we have to go back out and turn it back on. Now they can just call, say they're leaving, we shut it off. When they come back, they call, we turn it back on. And then the other one is for people who are consistently passed due on their utility bills. Our process now is to send a shut-off notice, wait to see if they pay, send a crew out, shut the water off outside at the valve, underground in front of your home, which sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. Wait for the person to pay it, and then go back and turn the water back on. This would eliminate all of that. Just, again, a push of a button, you can turn the water on and off. I don't see these being used for the majority. I think out of the 11,500 we have recommended to replace, less than 500 would be these auto-shut-off ones. It would just be where deemed necessary by staff. And yeah, I think a few hundred would really help with the continuous problems we have in certain places. So on to the selection process. The selection committee made up of city staff ranked the proposals based on cost, reading system capabilities, meter capabilities, system software, and vendor history. And the complete scoring matrix of all seven proposals is in your staff report. The committee awarded the highest score to Wind Water based on their ability to provide the best possible solution at the lowest total cost. Multiple references were called from other municipalities who have completed similar projects with Wind Water. All of them provided positive responses and are happy with the product they received. I do have two representatives from Wind Water and Mueller Water Meters here to ask any, answer any questions specific to their proposal. I'm happy to answer any of your questions about how we got here, anything about the RFP or the process in general. And I would just like to make the recommendation first, and then I'll ask through your questions. We ask that you accept, accept the proposal from Wind Water for the advanced meter infrastructure system and residential water meter replacement in the amount of $4,251, $251,296.51, and approve a contract with Wind Water, subject to review and approval by the city attorney for the installation of an advanced meter infrastructure system and the replacement of 11,500 residential water meters.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. President Sandy.
Mr. Hanson, thank you. This is really exciting and a really amazing upgrade to our water system. I'm trying to understand, is there a difference in price between the auto, the, the services that we can automatically shut off versus those that we can't?
Yes. I can get the specific, but just off my memory, it's less than double the price. So if a, if a regular meter was $200, I think that it was a little bit under $400, but I can get the exact price from Todd if he would like that. He's sitting right in the back.
Well, so I'm just trying to understand, because at some point, so I really appreciate that staff is trying to save the city money and the taxpayers' money, but at some point, you're going to be back here asking us to upgrade the rest of the systems. So I wonder if, I don't know, maybe we should buy more than we typically would in this situation? I'm, I'm not sure. I'm ready to move approval. I think this is great. I also do want to know that, I'm sorry, and then run on question into another question. How are we going to notify people if their water's running?
Well, the main, the nice thing is when they schedule this appointment for the meter, to do their meter changeout, we're going to ask them to provide an email and a cell phone. We have email and cell phones for a lot of our customers, but I, I would hope we could use that. I guess we would have to ask if we can use that, but we are, we were definitely going to request that information as part of the, the appointment process.
Well, this is a great idea. I feel like, I feel like somebody's been talking about this for a long time. So that's a great idea. So in lieu of suggesting we should buy more of the expensive meters, I will move approval, and I appreciate all the hard work.
We have a motion from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weigel. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Lunskey, please. Ms. Lunskey, please.
Do you give people the option to upgrade? Like, say I am going to become a snowbird, and I'd like that option. Can I request that?
We had been talking about this, and we hadn't quite decided if we were going to make it an option, and the homeowner would pay the difference, or if the city would provide it. We hadn't discussed fully how we were going to implement. We really just identified the people that we wanted them installed in for delinquency reasons, to determine how many we wanted. As far as the snowbirds, I don't know if we've made that decision yet.
I think for a snowbird, I think it's a service, do they pay, if you come out and turn their water off, is that a service they pay for?
That's a fee you pay, yes.
So I think...
It would eliminate that fee if you had to meet.
Yeah, and then you paid for the upgrade.
Paid for the meter.
Seems like a great option.
Okay.
Ms. Sowsky.
All right. So first, I guess, when I hear about anything smart, I think of surveillance, monitoring, analyst reporting technology. And so, you know, it goes along with the smart cities, smartphones. I have a hard time agreeing with things that are going to monitor our citizens even more, even though it is our city water that they have to pay for. I guess I am a problem child when it comes to the Water Department. I have not allowed them inside my home to change the battery on my current water meter. Me and Mr. Hanson did talk about maybe some options, but so this new water reading system, will this go in the current location where we have them, or will they be placed on the outside of the home, like you and I discussed?
This will all be placed inside, but what me and you spoke about, an opt-out policy for customers who don't want the system, is something we plan to roll out before this goes into effect. There will be a fee associated with people who opt out for us to manually read their water meter each month. So there would be a monthly fee, but we are currently working on an opt-out policy that will go hand-in-hand with this.
Okay, I'm very happy to hear that, because I will be one that chooses to opt out. But just speaking, I guess, about the new devices, do we have an EMF read on these? You know, how much radiation are each one of these devices going to put out?
I could, Todd or Dan could probably give you specifics, but I know that if a cell, I know a cellphone is around five hundred, and these are around forty. So far less powerful than a cellphone, but anything more specific than that, I will have to ask them to answer the question.
Okay, and I'm not so concerned, like, if you have one cellphone, or if you have one of these, but, you know, we have cellphone tower, or cellphone antennas now up on our light poles, we have them around our water towers. I mean, it's not just, oh, it's less than your cellphone. I mean, all these things add up, you know, into unhealthy radiation, and so I just want to make sure that we're not just looking at this one specific device, but we start looking at all of the devices that we have around our town, and the different types of radiation that all of these are putting out, and not just say, well, your cellphone's safe, but then you add on top the water meter, then you add on top the Wi-Fi, then you add on top, you know, what's on top of the city lights. I mean, some of these things, just people can't opt out of. And so I want to make sure that those radiation levels within our community are staying within a reasonable amount. I guess I'm really happy to hear about the opt-out system, and...
I can send you specifics on the transmitters and the collectors also from the manufacturer, if that would help.
Okay, is there any way to get these put, like, on the outside of our home, so city employees don't have to come inside our home? Because that's one reason why I don't, like, I don't think anybody should be able to just, I don't like that.
So the opt-out policy would have two options. One would be just to pay a little, a one-time fee to have staff install the transmitter on the outside of your home. So the outside of the home. And then the second one would be to completely opt out of any smart meter, have a manual meter with still, with a remote display on the outside of your house. So we're not going, ever going back to going inside your home, but it's just two options to opt out, essentially.
Okay, I guess, as long as there's opt-out things, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Veen.
Just one question. Are individuals able to actually monitor their own usage on a smartphone or whatever it is, so that you can see almost day-to-day how much water you're using, and what you're doing monthly, yearly, and all of that?
There is. It's an option, an add-on option. To every proposal we receive, the user portal was an add-on option, and it's a rather expensive option. So we were hoping to roll out and get the replacement done, and get the network up and running, and then see if there's a demand for a user portal, and if there is a demand, then we would come back probably and ask for that, because that is an annual fee, reoccurring fee, and it doesn't matter if one person uses it, or if everyone uses it, the fee's the same.
I mean, I see that on my electrical usage and different, it's really kind of neat to be able to do that, manage and monitor yourselves, especially at various weather times, or if you have a big leak and don't know it, you can obviously detect it and send a notice.
No, it is something that we, it is an option, and it, if there's a demand from the citizens of Grand Forks, we would definitely try to offer that. But we didn't recommend it at this time because of the price.
President Sandy.
Listen, Mr. Hanson, how much is it?
Forty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay. So it's a fixed cost. The company has zero expense in rolling out that software for our community, because they've already invested the cost in developing it. There's no reason why we couldn't talk to them about a graduated rollout cost, ten percent, twenty-five percent, sixty percent, eighty, a hundred over the next five years. See if you suggest to them, because they've already invested the money in developing the software, see what they'd be willing to do in a multi-year rollout for us, and if it's reasonable, or if you and the man and Todd think it's reasonable, then perhaps bring it back. Thank you.
I will find that information before you next week's, before next week's meeting.
Anything further? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
I said, I'm probably no.
And we have one, one no. Ms. Sowsky dissenting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item 3.15, wastewater treatment phase two project 8569, guaranteed maximum price. Ms. Parvee.
Good evening, Council Vice President, Councilmember Weber, members of the committee. Tonight, we're looking at bringing forward the wastewater treatment plant project for We've currently been working on phase one and phase two of the wastewater treatment plant renewal projects, or improvements projects. And so under phase one, we've done a number of upgrades, we're working on a number of upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. This is a lot of process piping. We've got valves and actuators, pumps that are being replaced within the existing plant. These are improvements that had to happen, kind of regardless of what we decided to do back in 2022. In 2000, we began working on a facility plan where we identified the need to deal with hydraulic limitations within the existing wastewater treatment plant. And at that time, we looked at many different options on what we could do. In 2022, we decided to hire a CMAR. We did an RFP for proposals and had PKG submit a proposal for us. At that time, we did award the contract to them and started working with them on phase one and phase two of the project. It seemed to make sense at that time to combine the work. Knowing that we were still designing phase two, we worked with them to value engineer and make smart decisions as we worked through that process. We, one, wanted to work with a CMAR because it helped us meet a schedule, and that schedule has been a little bit more flexible since we no longer have our larger industrial user that was planned at one point. But currently, they still allow us to have that cost security that a CMAR offers to a project, as well as identifying a schedule that we can meet. So within phase two, we moved some items from phase one to two. So over time, we've tried to make sure that we're doing everything we need to at the wastewater treatment plant. We've added a new access road, but the main features are shown in color here, where the existing plant's off to the left. We have the new fine-screen building, which is in red. We have a new secondary biological treatment, which is actually in green there, and then a new membrane bi-reactor system, which Todd had discussed earlier. This is kind of our new parallel treatment process at the wastewater treatment plant. It will allow us to treat 2.5 million gallons a day, that was looked at in the facility plan for standard growth, and then additional 2.5 million gallons a day for conservative industrial growth. We do have an opportunity, as you can see outlined there, in building out, similar to what we did at the water treatment plant, knowing that we're making a huge investment for sixty to a hundred years, sixty to seventy, a hundred years, that we wanted to have the ability to be able to expand what we were currently building as we were upgrading and being able to utilize the existing campus and facility there. I do have Madison Albert that will come and highlight our project and progress, right after. I just want to review the costs with you. As tonight, we're looking at awarding, or tonight, next week, we're looking at awarding the GMP for phase two of this project. So in total, to date, what we've been working on has been a number of things. Pre-construction services, we've got at 1.3 million. Phase one is at a total of 11.5 million, and phase two, with everything that's included to date, is a total of 85 million dollars. The precon, I'm sorry, the GMP that we're actually asking you to approve tonight is And so the total project that we're talking about is going to be over, slightly over a million dollars. We haven't determined the construction services yet for A2S, but we will be bringing that back to you. We just wanted to continue through negotiations through that with them.
Good evening, thanks, Melanie. As Melanie mentioned, my name is Madison Albert, so I am a project manager with PKG Contracting. We are the construction manager at risk for the phase one and phase two improvements project at the wastewater treatment facility. Our last update was by Darren Finkston, the president of PKG, back in June. This is one of the slides from his presentation. So we highlighted five projects. He wanted to emphasize the environment of bidding in the municipal water wastewater industry, especially in projects in excess of 50 million. So at that time, we highlighted the Fargo wastewater treatment facility and did a comparison to the Grand Forks water plant and what that would cost at that time. Just an update from June to now, the major items we highlighted at that time were that we were receiving, we were seeing an influx of projects, especially projects in excess of 40, 50 million, that were only receiving one, zero-to-one bids from specialty contractors capable of doing the work. Since then, that influx has continued to increase. One note I wanted to make, probably five to 10 years ago, a project of this size in excess of 40 to 50 million, we might have seen maybe one or two a year in this region. Now this year alone, 2024, from January to June of this year, we're seeing 10 projects coming out in excess of 75 million in this region alone. So that's just a point we wanted to make. We're definitely not seeing as much competition. There's not as many specialty contractors capable of achieving these projects. So that's one of the great things of having a CMAR brought in for this project. So we've been working with Melanie and Todd and their teams, and the A2S team, for over a year and a half now, getting the project to this point. We did have our bid day a few weeks ago here, January, or February 8th. We received a number of bids for the scope of work for the project, enough to have the entire project covered, and that's the number that Melanie shared with you guys tonight. So moving on here to some phase one progress, as Melanie mentioned, we're working on some pump, valve, and piping replacements at the existing facility. Our main goal with phase one was to identify the scopes of work that would not disrupt plant operations and try to tackle those items first. So we mobilized in early January, and we've made a significant improvement on those items. And we have subcontractors, our electrician and HVAC plumbing subcontractor will be on site here in the next few weeks. Now on the remainder of items that work, there is going to be a certain period, for about two to three weeks, that we will be bypassing operations to the lagoons at the wastewater treatment facility to do some of those more invasive scopes of work. We are working on securing material. We've got a couple of pieces of equipment that are still outstanding, we're waiting for delivery on, and then we will work with the plant operations to make sure that we're identifying the best time to do that bypass. Now on phase two, in September, there was a work authorization issued for the helical pier deep foundation system and earthwork packages for phase two. PKG mobilized in October of '23. Our first goal was to install the south access road, so we started on that right away, and that took about a month. So now there's a different access point to the facility. Main goal with that on our end was to make sure that we weren't, we were separating traffic between the plant operators and our construction traffic. So our concrete trucks, any major deliveries, we weren't impeding on any of their traffic. So that was completed right away last year, and then we proceeded to completely excavate two of the deeper structures for the phase two project, and we're about 75% done with helical pier installation on those two facilities. Now, the main focus on getting that early work authorization package was to meet schedule. Early on, working with A2S and the city, we identified that we would be bringing this, the rest of the GMP to council in this time of year, March, April timeframe at that point. So I, we identified that the helical pier installation and the earthwork, if we could start that as quickly as possible, it would set us up for a successful summer of pouring concrete this year. So that work will be done here in the next few weeks, so we'll be starting pouring concrete right away this summer. Lastly, I just wanted to commend both A2S and the City of Grand Forks teams, and Black and Beach as well, for their commitments to this project. We've definitely established the collaboration that's necessary for achieving a project of this caliber. So we're looking forward to transitioning into construction here, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parvee.
And just to reiterate the climate, we had talked a little bit with Adam Marcos of Black and Beach today and last week, and he was sharing a project in Rochester, Minnesota, that had currently been bid. It was a design-build-bid project, and it actually didn't receive any bids at all. And so now they're having to award a CMAR to that project to be able to get that project done. So we've had discussions and really feel that we've made good decisions to put us at this point today to be able to award a bid and get this project built.
Very good. Questions or comments? Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, on the bidding, you said you took bids here earlier in February, is that right?
Yep, we had a sealed bid opening on February 8th.
Okay, and so in doing so, obviously, you break it out into a number of bid packages. How many bid packages about did you break it out?
So we had, I'm not sure on an exact number, I believe there's 25, yeah. Twenty-five total, so just split out by all the different scopes required for the project, yep.
Okay, and how much local subcontractors were able to bid or looked like they'd be awarded?
They certainly had the option. We received bids from, I believe, two or three local contractors. One of the areas that we did not receive a ton of bids in was the architectural scopes. That's pretty typical for a project of this length. Architectural subcontractors sometimes have a hard time bidding out projects that far when they're going to be doing the work two years down the road. So for those specific items, we've allocated specific allowances that we know will cover the scope of work, and I would imagine that a lot of our local representation would be in those bid packages later on.
And you do have contingency within yours, too. How much was the contingency?
So we went 2.5% on owner and 2.5 on contractor. I believe that was about 3.6 million total.
And then you have a fee on top of that?
There's this, yep, yep.
Is that based on a percentage also?
It's a 6% fee, yep, which is very comparable for CMARs in this industry, in this market.
And then maybe, are you self-performing?
We will be self-performing. PKG did bid on 11 of the bid packages of the 25.
Okay, and you typically have competition, and where you self-perform?
On other projects, like a hard bid project, we typically would. For most of the scopes of work in this specific project, we did not receive a competitive bid. They certainly had the option to bid, we just didn't receive them. We did have one bid package that precast direction, that we did receive competition, and PKG was still the low bid.
Okay, and I just, I guess my only question, Mr. Phelan and I talked about this today, is just assuring that those ones where you do self-perform and you don't have competition, that... is just assuring that those ones where you do self-perform and you don't have competition, that we feel comfortable with what that bid amount was?
Absolutely. Mr. Vean, we also have a list, and we can share this as well as supplemental information, is we do have a list of all the solicitations that were made, so there was a number of, there was a lot of interest in the project, for whatever reason, we just didn't get competitive bids from them.
Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, I'm surprised, in some cases, it's really hard to get contractors now. I think you articulated that well, there's so much going on. It's a problem. So, I appreciate the work you're doing for sure, and the team that we've got going on, just like to validate some of that, because I think we're looking at making the formal award next Monday, I would assume. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Soski, please.
I guess something that just caught my eye while I was reading it is with the plan development of Epitome, the city will work with AE2S on the current design to allow for the reuse water to be used at their facility, correct? So, is that called gray water? Is that, after it comes out of?
We, we were informed by Department of Environmental Quality, they don't like the term gray water, they like reuse water.
I like gray water, so I'll keep using it. Okay, so, I guess a question that I have is, was this in the works before Epitome?
Yes.
And then, with our current system, can we provide Epitome with enough gray water if we needed to? So, this really has nothing to do, like, the construction of this has nothing to do with Epitome then?
I wouldn't say, oh, Mr. Phelan, I'll let you answer.
I would say it does, but it doesn't. So, we were wanting to expand, now, the reason why we started this plan is we needed to renew the existing facility, and so that was generally Phase One. Phase Two was to expand the facility for future use, so if you look at the next 30 years of this facility, and so, but when we look at the Phase Two, we wanted to go with a system in which would make sense for us to continue to grow. As Melanie said, we're expanding 2.5 million gallons per day. We want to be able to keep in that series of 2.5 million gallons per day, so we think we've picked the right technology that's futuristic for the treatment of our water, wastewater, and I think the other benefit was regarding whether it was the former industrial project we talked about with the wet corn mill, or if it was regarding Epitome Energy, is that this technology would provide really good treated wastewater to use in industry, because we know industry is going to grow in our area regarding agri business in this area. And so, if we were going to, and we're strategically located with our wastewater treatment plant to where they would locate, we wanted to go with the technology, not only that was good for, you know, whether we were going to have an agri business at all, but we went with, wanted to go with a system that would really work well in both ways. And so, we think we've done, we've hit the mark in a facility that will serve us today, but also serve us in the future.
Okay, are we rushing ahead or anything like that, just in preparation for Epitome, or is this?
It hasn't impacted the schedule to date. No, it just, it's been coincidental that it'll work really good with the timeline that they're anticipating, but we haven't moved our schedule based upon what's going on with Epitome to date.
Okay, and I don't know much about, like, the filtration of wastewater or anything like that, but does it help remove some of those, like, PFAs? I mean, are we, is the technology we're choosing going to help us with that problem that we currently have?
The membrane system definitely does allow for removal of certain contaminants. I'm not sure where we're at with the PFAS, but it's definitely a better system, of more thorough cleaning of the water.
Was, can you go back to the map, was there a membrane system and a more traditional type system also, or is it all?
It's a biological treatment. It's, they're in conjunction with each other.
So, kind of like our water treatment plant, we have the traditional and we have the reverse osmosis, correct?
Correct.
So, can we opt to only have reverse osmosis, or like, the membrane system then? Or is there a reason that we need to have both? What filters the water the best?
At this time, for capacity reasons, we'll need both systems, we'll need the parallel facility, because we treat between, I guess, eight to nine million gallons on average a day.
So, what did, what do we currently have then?
For treatment?
Yeah.
Capacity at the existing plant.
I guess process, I'm looking at, I'm wondering about the two different processes.
Well, the existing processes, it's a irrigation and biological, I guess they're similar, but one process is just an older way of treating the biology, like?
I think also Ms. Osowski, so what you're seeing in the green, and the gray and the red, that's going to give us an additional capacity of 2.5 million gallons per day, so we're probably right now on an average of eight. However, we have peaks, like during rain events or whatever else. So, what we're saying is, let's try to maximize the use of the existing facility over the long term, but as we continue to grow and expand, we will go with the better treatment system. But it would be so expensive for us just basically to throw away the old facility without renewing it, and if we were to add just all new facility, we would lose out on all the investment that we've already made, and it would be, it would be a dramatic shock on our wastewater rates if we were to pick that strategy.
You're talking about the two different processes, correct? So, but, but how come when we build these new facilities, we can't just use one process, you know, in the new facilities?
So, when, when the city, when we built this, see, these are four reactor tanks, there's, you see, there's four, and so, really, we're, we're moving away from this technology, this aeration system that they thought was going to be the, you know, the future, and now we're going to go to this more biological treatment system here for our future expansion. But in the meantime, you know, we, we're only moving forward with 2.5 million gallons per day. We need to treat on average 8 million gallons per day, so we're going to need both of these facilities as we grow and expand. And so, we want to keep this facility running for the next, you know, 20, 20 years while we migrate into this new system, but as we grow, we will be expanding with this system. But we think by balancing these two systems, we're going to have very good wastewater treatment, and it also allows us to see how this, this performs as we move forward. So, we're trying to get the best, and you hit the right analogy, it's like, at the new water treatment plant, we've got a conventional, we'll call it an augmented conventional system, and then we have this membrane RO system that we went 50/50 on. As we grow and expand at the water treatment plant, the future expansion is really intended for the membrane RO facility, especially now that it's performed so well, that that's where we'll grow and expand. But we're trying to, we're trying in this facility, we're trying to beneficial reuse what we've already invested, moving in with, looking at the future with a higher ability to treat. But all the wastewater is going to get interconnected, and so, we're going to have better wastewater than ever.
Right, but we're still adding more of the biological, correct? So, what kind of chemicals then get dumped into that?
Well, this is a biological, the chemicals that we're, we disinfect wastewater with basically sun rays, right? Human-made rays, that's how we disinfect. So, when you're worried about chlorine and chloramines and all those things with water treatment, we disinfect wastewater in a different fashion than we do our water, our drinking water.
But, so, obviously, Epitome is going to take some of our gray water, what happens to the rest of it, though? Are we causing additional, I mean, I know something needs to be done, we can't just sit on this wastewater, but are we pumping in more chemicals then into, does some of it go into the Red River?
So, what happens is, if you were to see this facility up here, I don't know if we have an aerial view of this whole thing, but this is, basically, we have a line that goes further north, about a mile. So, we, we treat the water, it goes into a pipe right now, it goes about a mile north and then to the river, to the west. So, really, what we're doing is, we're putting in water back into the Red River system, because we have a discharge permit, that's really quite clean right now, and as we add this facility, our treatment process is only going to get cleaner. The challenge we have in the Red River, and when we talked about PFAS in the Red River primarily, it's because to the south of us, a large portion of the river is wastewater effluent from Fargo, Moorhead, Wapatin, anyone south of us on the Red River side is, is a large portion, especially during the summer, is wastewater effluent. So, we have to have robust treatment on our water plant side, because that's what we're treating.
Right, we just want to make sure we're not creating a problem for people, I guess, north of us, you know, also if Fargo's creating this kind of issue.
It's called a, you know, the problem, what you're talking about is humans. If we didn't have humans, we wouldn't have to worry about all the things, but I think it's good to have humans in the Red River Valley, and so, therefore, we need drinking water plants and we need wastewater plants, but what we're doing with this, you should, you should know with this almost $100 million investment that we're making, we're making the environment better, we're returning water to the river that's going to be better, better than ever, so, and we're setting ourselves up in the future for future ability to treat additional wastewater. So, we, we are really making investment, not only in our community, but those that are downstream from us.
Okay, so then also, we'll pump some of the gray water to Epitome, they'll use it, and then they pump it back, and then we just kind of keep filtering it that way?
We'll treat it again, yep. So, remember, Epitome Energy on the max day needs 400,000 gallons per day. I think on average is about 300,000 gallons per day, so they're going to use a small portion of our wastewater effluent as part of their processing system, and they're going to return, I think, as I recall the number, like, 85,000 gallons are going to get returned to us, and then we're going to treat, treat that at our wastewater treatment facility too.
Okay.
If we could sell all of our wastewater effluent, it would be a great thing for, I think, the environment, for our balance sheet on the wastewater enterprise fund, but they're always going to return a percentage of the wastewater to us. It's going to be harder to challenge, because they're going to use up all the wastewater effluent and then return us to the City of Grand Forks and our treatment facility, some of the harder parts to treat.
And then, just to ask one more question, so we have the existing plant that uses these barrels, right?
Yeah.
And then we're going to have the green part that is the biological, and then the gray part is the membrane part, or, so then we're, will there be three of them, three different processes that we use to clean the wastewater?
The fine screen building, essentially, there's two processes. The fine screen building just screens the water, so it takes stuff that shouldn't be in wastewater out. So, there's, that's the red building. So, we screen the water as it comes in, and we remove stuff that shouldn't be in water, and then we send it to the biological treatment and then to the membranes.
Oh, okay, so, the water goes through the biological treatment, the green part, and then it goes through, is the membranes the gray part, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, it goes from the red building to the green building to the gray building?
Correct.
So, it goes through all of the processes? It's not like at our water treatment plant where it's, you know, two separate processes, and then they get mixed? This is, it goes through all those buildings, and then we have the existing plant that is a different one? Does that go through additional filtration, I guess?
It's essentially the same as the water plant, but it's, it's not, so the building isn't all one, this is separate buildings, but we essentially can choose to send it to the new, a parallel treatment system or the existing treatment system, system.
Okay.
And then it does come back together.
Okay, but in the new one, it goes through the two processes? It goes red building, green building, gray building, and then it comes out, and then the existing plant, whatever they, however they do theirs, then it all just mixes together, correct?
Correct. We do have some options to store in the lagoons and treat with UV as well, but we'd love to show you more if you want to come up.
I'll think about that one.
It's not as glamorous as the water treatment plant.
I know, the water treatment plant was beautiful, I enjoyed that too.
So, I think, Melanie, most treatment processes go in series, so as you said, it goes from red, green to gray, and then it goes to a pipe and gets disinfected. So, at this part, the wastewater comes into this plant, it goes over these reactors, and these reactors do its thing, it comes back to this plant, and then it gets released. So, everything's kind of in a series, and the magic of science and engineering and Mother Nature helps us treat all this stuff.
I like the Mother Nature one the best.
Mr. Vean?
Yeah, Mr. Phelan, are we decommissioning any of the existing ponds? I mean, how are they being addressed?
We, we had talked about decommissioning those two western leap ponds at one point, and since we've been doing wildlife mitigation at the wastewater treatment plant, we haven't pursued doing that at this time, mostly because it allows for extra storage for us in spring events or some, wet summer events that, to this point, we haven't, we haven't had to, and want to maybe keep that as an option, since mitigation has been going really well out there, and we haven't had the concern the airport initially had.
Okay, thank you. President Sandy, anything to add? I saw that you had.
Yeah, Mr. Ever, thank you, sorry about that. Quick question from Mr. Phelan, so if this new facility, you've been looking at this, it's going to help with a lot of industrial customers, is AE2S helping us to figure out how we're going to add the additional cost or help our industrial customers pay the additional expense of adding this additional facility?
You are correct, so we have residential, commercial, and industrial customers, so, you know, they're all paying their fair share with this. This council member or council president, Sandy, this additional capacity is really not meant for industry per se, it's meant for additional future capacity, whether that's residential, commercial, or industrial, but when we, what AE2S is also working with us on is that when we sell this beneficial reuse water, we're going to sell that at, we're working on what that cost should be for Epitome Energy or any other future agri business that wants to purchase this wastewater reuse. We are working on that too, pricing.
Yeah, great, excellent, thank you so much.
Mr. Vean, please.
I, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
We do not.
Can I make the motion to approve the GMP?
Yes, please. We have a motion from Mr. Vean.
And authorize the amendment and the budget amendment. I think there's three parts to that motion.
Yeah. And we have a second from Ms. Lunskey, Mr. Phelan?
Yeah, the staff, the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Further questions or comments? Nothing? Nothing? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. And with that, I'm sad to say we've come to the end, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I motion adjournment.
We have a motion second, oh, whoa, 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 yes, comments?
There's a motion on the table.
Yes, any further, do you, can you, are you willing to withdraw the motion for council, other council matters?
No, maybe someone could second it.
We could second it, very good. So, do we have a second for the motion? Very good, we have a second. Are there any other council member discussion matters? Ms. Lunskey, please.
I just want to, Ms. Osowski, you broke my heart when you didn't know where the Museum of Art was. I think the North Dakota Museum of Art is such a gem for our community, and they have Family Day, and it's free the last Saturday of every month, so I hope you take your kids to go check it out. And I think the Writers Conference, it's so hard in Grand Forks to put on an event, they bring in authors from everywhere, and it's such a great, another free event too. So, pencils and paper won't help them, but it is a great event, so I just needed to put my two cents in for them.
And the NGMOA is separate from the University of North Dakota, I don't believe they receive any university funding.
Is that that museum where you kind of have to, it's like by the railroad tracks?
It is.
I have been there.
Yes.
And I pictured to prove that with my kid, so I have, I.
There it is.
But I thought that was considered campus.
It's actually not campus, right?
It's not.
Right, it's on its own property, yeah. A tiny little gem, I think we.
Okay, I agree to call it a gem.
Yes, good, good. Further questions or any other discussion matters? President Sandy, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, thank you.
Yep, and get well soon, sir. With that, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, there we go.